This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors.
The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts and service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Nate, it's Nate.
I can do a really long prayer. Stretch it out.
He said Jade was gonna try to be here if she could get the kids.
There's no trouble getting his family to show up anyplace. You let me know what you want.
They traded in the van for a 16, 15 passenger van.
I hear a crew coming.
Did you want to be handy or?
Sounds like your family with children.
It's ready.
Recording in progress.
All right, it's six o'clock and I call our city council meeting for March 17th, 2025 to order. We will begin with an opening prayer by Pastor Mike Drew Droop from Crescent Lake Christian Center, followed by our pledge of allegiance, brother.
So Lord Jesus, we come to you acknowledging our need for you. Lord, without your grace and mercy covering our community, Lord, we'd be undone. And so, Lord, again, we just ask you please to cover us with grace and mercy. Lord, the men and women in this room and what they represent, and all the different facets of the government, Lord, I ask you to give them wisdom that comes from you. Lord, protect them, protect their families. And Lord, may this town be a great place to live that brings glory and honor to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have the roll call of council members? By the city clerk, please.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilman McGovern.
President.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes. At this time, I'll recognize any visitors who would like to address the council.
Thank you, Mark. Many of y'all have this invitation from Mark and I inviting you to come to the mayor's annual prayer breakfast. It'll be May 1st at the Allen's. We believe we've got a great speaker. Love for everybody to come if you can be there. It's so easy for a community to be divided if you hadn't noticed. Post something on Facebook and it's crazy. And if we can gather together, I believe, and exalor just to keep blessing our community. And if you ever have been to our prayer breakfasts, we actually pray at a prayer breakfast. When some of them you go to it, get very little praying done. And so, we really want God to be honored. Love for you guys to be there. John McGovern, AKA Ambrose has the tickets and he'll be glad to get you some. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate it, brother Mike.
And I think I set a precedent last year. It's called the mayor's prayer breakfast. And so, I thought, well, that means the mayor ought to pray, right? And so, that's what happened. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of March 3rd, 2025.
I move that we approve the city council minute meeting, the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of March 3rd, 25, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll pose like sign. Minutes are approved. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented.
Move to approve the agenda as printed and presented. Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Councilman McGovern.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes. So we'll move to agenda item number one. Knowing how much Nate Williams loves attention, we've invited him back to the city council meeting tonight. Kidding, kidding, Nate. Representative Myrath has been busy at a state level creating a resolution. And so, I'm gonna ask Representative Myrath and Nate to join me for the dais. And we're gonna present this to Nate and thank him one more time for all the wonderful things he does for our community.
So when I found out that Nate was, I ordered that. I checked out a little bit. It's a pretty big honor. So we decided to do a resolution for him. So I ordered it about a week and a half ago. So Thursday morning, which is get out of town day. It came to my desk ready to go. Only it said Clay County Community Center. And I went, no, 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 that can't be wrong. So I said, it's gotta be Excelsor Springs Community Center, because that's what it is. And so, by the time I left, about 2:30, it was ready for me. And I'm able to bring it. So they hustled and got it done. So anyway, I'll read it for you. Since whereas the members of the Missouri House of Representatives proudly pause to recognize Nate Williams, unesteemed resident of Excelsor Springs, Missouri, who has received the Missouri Parks and Rec Distinguished Associate Fellow Award, and whereas courageous to recognize outstanding professionals who show exemplary leadership, innovation, and sustained commitment to their communities, the Distinguished Associate Fellow Award is one of the highest honors presented by the Missouri Parks and Rec Association. Whereas Nate Williams balances a busy family life with four small children, with his role at Parks and Rec Community Center, where he is passionate about forging connections between seniors and kids, the small surrounding towns and people who may not otherwise meet. Whereas with the mission statement, start with play, have fun, and make memories, Nate Williams finds real joy when neighbors meet at local sports spots, and when families, including his own, share smiles and hearts and bits. And whereas for Nate, a long day or project is a reminder of why he chose to have him bring people together and make Excelsor Springs a better place to live and work. Whereas, the devoted husband of Jade, Nate Williams, will be honored during a special presentation to be held at the Excelsor Springs Community Center. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Missouri House of Representatives, 133 General Assembly, join in extending our most hearty congratulations to Nate Williams at this proud moment of well-deserved distinctions, and be further advised that the Chief Clerk of the State Missouri House of Representatives will be instructed to prepare a properly inscribed copy of this resolution for Nate Williams. This is also will be in the records forever. So his kids, his kids' kids, his kids', 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 go down and see what great grandpa did 40 years ago. So this is a great deal.
Come on, Nate.
Come on.
Representative Myrath, I, would you say, soon as Jason gets through the pictures and stuff, would you say a word about the House bill, which one is?
1530.
15, okay, 1534.
Sorry. I figured you made all the trouble to get all the kids out.
That's right. Absolutely. And there's a reason there's more adults, because they can't walk upstairs.
I'm glad you finally hit a boy.
That's a lot of work.
First time I've heard it called work.
Don't be bashful.
Right here. There you go. One, two, three.
Thank Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members. I appreciate your valuable time, but I'll bring you up to date on the Excelsor Springs water bill. So just real briefly, in this session alone, there were 1,713 bills filed. This has got to committee in less than two weeks. God smiled on us. I don't know how else to say it. Two weeks ago on a Wednesday night, I knew nothing about this. Curtis Gregory said, did the Excelsor Springs people meet with you today? And I went, and I didn't see anybody from Excelsor. And he said, oh, I did. And he said, I don't know much about it, but there were some people here, Dennis Hartman. And he has an idea about the water. And so, he said, I've got a bill drafted, come by, get it drafted. And this is two days before the filing deadline, before any bills could be the last day for filing. And I'm not real thrilled, because this is right at the last minute. So I got it, looked it over. It was, Mark, you can hold it up, I think. I mean, it's not much at all. That's the bill.
It's short.
Short and sweet. You love reading those. And so, I took it down to drafting, which is the next step. And they go, well, I don't know if we can get this done today or tomorrow. Last, and I went, and I can't twist their arm and all. I said, okay, do what you can do. And so, which meant that Thursday was get out of town day, which meant that I probably was gonna have to spend the night Thursday night to make sure that this gets filed. And they got it done. On that Thursday, we got it filed. It goes, it went then to committee and very quickly in a week. So I presented it. Stacy Macy was there, gave some wonderful testimony in favor of the bill. So when you go in front of a committee, there were 14 people there and they asked questions. And people a lot of times ask questions just to let people know how smart they are. So they asked questions, well, how are you gonna prevent somebody from pumping all this water to the West Coast? And I went, I don't know, but why would you do that? And I said, this isn't a municipal water supply. This is a trickle well and yada, yada, yada. And so, they wanted to make sure that the next administration wasn't gonna steal it. So anyway, I alleviated their fears. On Thursday afternoon, I got a call that we were gonna be heard for the exec session, which is getting it out of committee. And so, there's 14 people. Friday morning, I called Jeff Arnhem, who is the commissioner, the chair, and I said, hey, what do you think? And he goes, no problem. It'll go through. So he said, I'm gonna recommend that we pass it. And I said, good. See you Monday. So this coming Monday, I've been keeping Mark advised and talked to Molly a number of times. So looks really good for, it doesn't make any sense not to do this, right? So anyway, anything else, I'll keep forwarding it to Mark and obviously to Molly. So if anybody's, I'm done. If anybody had a question, we weren't happy to answer them for you. So.
No, it's perfect timing to get in under the wire and moving forward.
It is. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your work on that. Yeah, the restrictive language in this bill from 1933 prevented us from using any public funds whatsoever to do anything associated with the mineral waters. So this allows us some freedom. And I really appreciate your work on this. You and.
Curtis.
Yeah, Senator Gregory. All right. Second item on the agenda is a presentation by Downtown Excelsor Partnership for the annual report. Ms. Lindsay Baxter will present this report to the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Two tough acts to follow. A great award, and we get to have water again, maybe, if you can find it. So stay with me for a little bit. We'll wait for, oh, Ms. Susan's got us taken care of. Thank you. So I'm excited to present this report to you regarding everything in downtown Excelsor Springs in 2024. I'm happy to report that we've again been recognized as a nationally accredited Main Street America community. Tonight, we'll look at some key accomplishments, reflect on our impact, and share what our vision looks like for the future. So everything that we do in downtown Excelsor Springs is driven by collaboration with you, our city partners, with our volunteers, with our business community, and all the stakeholders. So it is the power of many that make everything we do possible. Our vision has not changed. It has just become a little bit more trendy in its words. We remain community-supported, volunteer-driven. We are here to create a thriving downtown that seamlessly blends our historic past with the modern possibilities of the future. We want this to be a place where our local businesses flourish, residents feel a deep sense of pride, and our visitors can't wait to explore. Back to that team of many. None of this would be possible without the leadership of our board of directors. These individuals bring diverse backgrounds and diverse experiences that allow us to have success. So our awardee, Nate Williams, is my board president. Janine Stubbs, former Excelsor business owner, vice president. Jill Rickert of Ventana Gourmet Grill is our treasurer. Alan Amos, who started as a resident on the board and is now a small business owner, is our secretary. Brenda Kilgore, Keith Hudson, and Jason Ventil are board members. We are fortunate to have Councilman St. John as our liaison and enjoyed his time on our board. Just some highlights before we dig into the deep stuff. We, as an organization, spent $128,000 last year marketing the district. We awarded $16,000 in facade grants to downtown businesses. We had 9,420 hours donated by volunteers. There was 604,000 in private investment. For every $1 we received from you in our public service agreement, we were able to raise an additional $7.51, and we had 7.1 in reported retail taxable sales. Our social statistics. So this is our ability to connect with the people and our ability to share our story, to get people to want to come visit us. Through the website and our social media channels, we were again able to reach over 1 million people. Almost 214,000 website visitors, 1.5 million website pages viewed, and nearly 775,000 reached through social media. And that's the kind of engagement that we want to keep so we can keep Excelsor Springs at the top of everyone's mind. You may have noticed that there was a slight decrease in the marketing spend in 2024 compared to 2023. We didn't have access to those Clay County ARPA dollars, so we made some amendments. We're very happy to report that these numbers are consistent and like dead even with where we were, even with that additional $80,000 spend in 2023. We attribute that to our videography marketing through our YouTube ads and the engagement people like out of the video. So we're very happy with these statistics and look forward to what continues in 2025. A sales tax, a look through the years. You can see the bar graph and the growth, some slight ups and downs, 2020. We're not gonna talk about that. 7.14 million was spent in 2024 in downtown Excelsor Springs. Again, that's just retail taxable sales. So that doesn't include the massage you get, the accounting service you receive. So we know that number is higher, but here's what we can track. That's the highest it's ever been. That's a 7.1% increase compared to 2023, a 29.5% increase compared to 2019, and 105% increase since the CID was started in downtown Excelsor Springs. Those aren't just numbers. When you see those, those are businesses thriving, jobs being created, and a stronger downtown economy. Events that have impact. We know that events, they're gonna bring energy, they bring engagement as well as dollars into our local economy. In the past year, we welcomed 35,000 visitors during our signature event days alone. During the six ticketed events, which are much easier to track, we're happy to report that attendees spent over $275,000 just on those days. And we just, we wanna make sure everybody knows, while the events are fun experiences, that's not just what they are. They are economic drivers that are helping sustain our small businesses in our downtown district and creating memories for the attendee to bring them back. Downtown visitation. This is the information pool from Placer AI. Our visits this year were 346,562. That's an increase of 1.7% compared to 2023. Visitors totaled 96,353, a 1.8 increase. Our visit frequency was 3.6, which remained consistent with 2023. And our average dwell time increased by four minutes to 71 minutes. So these numbers show us that the work we are doing is working and that more people are coming to see us. Visitation patterns. You can see not, not a lot spikes, no major spikes that we should be overly concerned with. The same months are trafficked about the same. We obviously see peaks in the warmer months because people don't like to stand outside in the cold. But you see particular spikes in June and August, which align with when our major event and festivals occur in the community. When we look at it by day, again, nothing alarming, no strange changes. But what we do see when we look at this is significant opportunity for potential Thursday evening traffic, as well as potentially activating Sundays in the district, as we know we have the consumer staying here at our overnight stays. Time of day, again, it doesn't get much similar. It just grows. But it shows that peak visitation data and around that dinner hour. And so, when we talk later about our plans for the future, you'll hear about some of the new initiatives we're trying to implement to take advantage of the potential extended shopping hours. Our trade area. We're attracting visitors from almost 1,800 different zip codes with nearly 40% of our visits coming from the local 64024 resident. Our trade area extends well beyond Missouri. 24 of the top 100 zip codes are located outside of Missouri, showing that we still have that regional appeal and that our marketing and our efforts to bring people in regionally are working. The downtown business mix. Our downtown is home to 95 different businesses. We saw a little bit of movement coming in and out, but overall, when you put it on paper, we only had a net loss of just one business last year, which is stronger than sometimes we hear about. Retail and services make up approximately 50% of our downtown business mix. Our first floor vacancy rate decreased slightly to 15.5%. But I think it's important to note that 30% of that 15.5% will be occupied in 2025. 5% are under construction. 35% are available for lease or for sale. And unfortunately, 30% have no plans for construction or tenancy. Reinvestment. Back to that big figure. $604,000 were spent in private investment to downtown properties last year. As an organization, we know that property reinvestment is important and it's a priority, but we are beginning to see some challenges. Some of those challenges include listing prices not matching what the market can support, which we fear may result in some longer vacancy periods. So we're gonna brainstorm how we can better work through those and work with property owners. However, in good news, we can report that we have held a loan to a property since 2010. And in 2024, slightly off Broadway, paid that off in full. And they are now the outright owner of their property at the theater. Again, going back to those volunteer hours, that's a huge number. That's the most we've ever had. And that's the equivalent of over $315,000 in time being donated to our organization. When you look at that visitor data with the amount being spent in downtown, we have an average visitor spend per visit of $20.57 and $74.11 per visitor, which is up from $19.56 and $70.42 in 2023. A financial summary. We are funded through a diverse mix of revenue sources, with events making up a large portion at 40%. Memberships, sponsorships, grants, and public support play a critical role in our programming and the work that we do. We've strategically invested in downtown beautification, $32,000 last year, marketing and our operating expenses so that we are able to maximize our impact. If you compare 2024 to 2023, you will see a big increase in that block that says salaries. We have since determined that while needed, we're not financially ready for that. So you will see that number again decrease whenever I come before you next year, as we go back to just the executive director and going back to the basics of being more volunteer-driven. We weren't comfortable cutting any of our programming to our businesses to be able to support that. So. And then those volunteer teams that made up that 9,400 figure we talked about, we have nine. When I started, it was four, and we've grown a lot. Those are our design team, our economic vitality team, our organization team, promotion, barbecue, homebrew, Christmas, Okawau, and our website team. They were responsible for being a part of 98 different projects last year. Looking ahead, some of the projects you'll see us focusing on on 2020 or in 2025 are wayfinding implementation. We do have the commitment from your ARPA funding. And then we also received an additional 15,000 from an opportunity through the Missouri Division of Tourism to further expand our efforts there. The mini mural series, which are in my office, will be going up late spring, early summer. We are working with the Chamber of Commerce, again, with the assistance of your ARPA dollars, to add electrical infrastructure to better support our festivals and events. We have heard from the consumer that they don't like the fees associated with Eventbrite, so we are changing our event ticketing software. We will continue to serve on the World Cup, Clay County, and Platte County organizations so we can better prepare our community and our businesses. If you hadn't heard, we are now responsible for the Okawau gravel experience, which will be making its return in October of 2025. It is the 25th annual barbecue and fly-in, so we'll have a lot of big celebrations there. We have some new and fun ideas about partnership and expansion with the Visit Excelsor brand and campaign that we're excited to share about. And then, of course, working with our local team on the Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, that we're excited to have those 200 attendees in downtown Excelsor Springs in September. So with that, I think the future is bright. I hope what I shared with you makes you feel that way also. There's momentum going for a strong economy, and I look forward to continuing that. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you may have, and we appreciate your support.
Very nice.
Nice to hear.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good presentation.
Absolutely.
Very, very nice.
Lindsay, those numbers are outstanding.
Great numbers.
Very, very pleased. Okay, agenda item number three is consideration of destruction of certain municipal records. Ordinance number 25-03-04, and our brand new community development director Mallory Brown will present the details of this ordinance to the council. and our brand new community development director Mallory Brown will present the details of this ordinance to the council.
So that was a hard act to follow with my somewhat boring item. But good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening is an ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain municipal records, in this case, their community development records. All of the records that you see that are on the list attached have either met or exceeded their retention timeframe. Many are just duplicates that we, we have kept downstairs and all scanned, so I would ask for your approval. They will be destroyed at a future shred event, which I believe will be scheduled sometime in April. Any questions?
April of this year?
Yes, I'm told yes.
Have you personally looked at each document?
I have not personally looked at each document. I think my staff is pretty trustworthy, though.
Good answer. He's trying to trick you out.
I know he is. I feel like this is a thing. I'm ready for it, I don't worry.
Thank you for that presentation, Mallory.
You're welcome.
We have before us an ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain municipal records. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero four to second reading.
Mayor, I make a motion to take ordinance twenty five dash zero three dash zero four, consideration of destruction of certain municipal records to second reading.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, an ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain municipal records, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero four.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero four, consideration of destruction of certain municipal records.
Second.
Take any of it, I.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero four is approved. Moving on to.
Will other city departments be participating in this?
There'll be more coming forward.
Okay.
Yes. Agenda item number four is consideration of application for state transit assistance, ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero five. And it was to be presented by Chad Birdsong, our Public Works Director, but Chad is sick this evening. So Molly is going to present, our city manager.
Thank you very much. So this state transit grant is a part of the funding mix for our bus system. Later, there'll be the funding assistance, federal funding that would come through. So they usually don't indicate what a dollar amount is, but just so you know, last year it was about eighteen thousand dollars, and they generally want you spending, spending it upfront. So we generally spend it first when the budget year starts and then go into our federal funding. So this, we will anticipate something very similar to this year.
Any questions for Molly on this ordinance? Okay, this one's a mouthful, so. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to apply for federal financial assistance on behalf of the City of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and to execute any contracts resulting from such application for any grants between the City of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for capital, operating, and/or marketing assistance comprised of federal funds to be expended for commissions approved transit projects. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero five to second reading.
Move to take ordinance twenty five, tag op three, tag op five, consideration of application for state transit assistance to second reading.
Second.
I was hoping you would have to read the whole thing. Roll call Shannon. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to apply for federal financial assistance on behalf of the City of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and to execute any contracts resulting from such application for any grants between the City of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for capital, operating, and/or marketing assistance comprised of federal funds to be expended for commission-approved transit projects. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero five.
I move we approve ordinance number twenty five dash zero three dash zero five, consideration of application for state transit assistance.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Agenda item number five is consideration of U-Bass agreement with Machinane Construction, resolution fifteen fifty six. And again, our city manager, Molly McGovern, will present the details of this resolution to the council.
Thank you. So this, this is going to be a three-part. So there are three resolutions in a, in a row. The first one is the U-Bass project. And the way this, since we did our street scan, we typically do base and curb repair one year, and the next year we come back and do the overlay. So this represents projects that received base repair last year. So the U-Bass, and I will say Chad said all his projects came in underbid, so he's very pleased with that. We allocated one point four million dollars for our projects for this year, and they came in about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars under budget. So he's thinking they'll potentially add an additional street, and he'll probably come back with that as a change order. So this first agenda item is for U-Bass repair, U-Bass overlay in the Gulf Hill neighborhoods that will include Bell Drive, High Drive, and Forest Drive. And this, the best bid was a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. The engineers estimate a hundred and ninety three thousand six hundred. So in your packet, you'll see a map of where those streets are located as well.
Just for clarification, the first time I heard U-Bass, I said, "What?" It is ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface.
A very thin layer.
Very thin layer. That'll come in handy on trivia.
There you go.
All right. Any comments or questions for Molly on this resolution?
I know when Chad presented this Friday, I think it's important to point out, too, that this is part of a bigger picture of the street scanning.
Yeah.
So it's not just, you know, roll the dice and figure out where we're going to spend street dollars.
Yes.
It actually helped us to be strategic in planning what is the appropriate response or repair for what street in town, so.
We are trying to raise our overall score of all our street condition, and there are some streets that are past the point of repair, easy repair, and need a fuller reconstruction, really. So we are trying to keep those streets that are in good condition, fair condition, in good condition. So we're reaching them before they reach that more expensive repair. So it's hard to consider that when someone has very poor-conditioned street. But we are assuming, we're trying to accumulate the funds to do those deep repairs, and then we've got to keep our streets from getting into the place where it's more expensive to repair, so.
And if Chad were here tonight, he could, he could wax Elkhorn for another fifteen minutes on this item alone.
That's right.
He's not here, so it's going to be a fairly short meeting tonight. Hope you're watching, Chad. All right, we have before us a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a U-Bass agreement with Machinane Construction, resolution number fifteen fifty six. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve resolution fifteen fifty six, consideration of U-Bass agreement with Machinane Construction.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And the second part of this project, Molly's already explained. Do you want to elaborate on resolution number fifteen fifty seven?
The second phase of this is with a different contractor. So this agreement is with Vance Brothers. It's for chip and seal in the neighborhoods between North Main and Salem Road and from Grand at the north side and Excelsior Street on the south. And then also, south of downtown, from South Marietta Street to Oric Road. So it's really quite a large area, but those are for chip and seal. And that's based on the type of construction they already are. So that bid, the low bid, was four hundred and ninety four thousand one ninety three, and this was a savings under the estimate of five hundred and seventy one thousand.
And Molly, I, I assume this would be the type of chip and seal we did last year that uses granite rather than limestone?
Yeah.
So it's, it's much more attractive and.
Yeah. A little bit better than.
Less dusty until it settles into the.
Yeah.
The asphalt material. Okay. We have before us a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a chip-seal agreement with Vance Brothers. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifteen fifty seven.
I move that we approve resolution number fifteen fifty seven, consideration of agreement with Vance Brothers LLC for the twenty twenty five street skate project.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Resolution number fifteen fifty seven is approved. Moving on to agenda item number seven, consideration of base repair agreement with All-Pro Asphalt for twenty twenty five Street Skate Project, resolution number fifteen fifty eight.
And this is for base repair, which means they'll be back next year with the surfacing. And this is for the neighborhoods that are north of Tracy. So that's a large area, which, when you look at the map, it would be King's Edition, Wilson Estates. And then it looks like, it's kind of on the side. Well, everything around the Hunan, that side of town. Everything north of Tracy, but on the east side of Jesse James.
Any questions for Molly on this resolution? Hearing none, we have before us a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a base repair agreement with All-Pro Asphalt. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifteen fifty eight.
I move we approve resolution fifteen fifty eight, consideration of base repair agreement with All-Pro Asphalt for the twenty twenty five street skate project.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Resolution number fifteen fifty eight is approved. And agenda item number eight is consideration of declaration of board vacancies, resolution number fifteen fifty nine. And again, Molly McGovern, our city manager, will deliver the details of this resolution to the council.
All right, thank you. We do have a couple of vacancies on our board roster from early terminations. And since we were in the process of doing this, park and rec board terms expire at the end of, end of May. So we included those in our, what we will do as an advertisement. So this is a resolution of the, of the council that is declaring vacancies exist on Board of Zoning Adjustment, the Community Center Board, and Parks and Rec will have vacancies the end of May. And upon your approval, we would then publish these vacancies, try to collect applications to the vacancies in the next thirty days and bring that list of applicants back to you to consider.
And just on a personal note, this is going to make it much easier on the mayor, whether it be this mayor or future mayors.
It's enough to make me go to jail.
It's a job.
Big mouth.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, and, and it's, it's, it's fairly easy to find someone with a pulse who may want to serve, but to find someone who fits the committee or the commission is much more difficult. And sometimes when you appoint someone, you go, "Oh, maybe I shouldn't have done that." So anyway, not, not thinking of any, anyone in particular.
Never, never happens.
I think it helps, too, if they proactively step up to the plate.
Sure. Well, you're not aware of who's interested until you've asked, so.
And one of the things that we, that Molly and I have discussed is, is allowing the commu, the.
Citizens.
Citizens Leadership Academy to have a few hours in their training session to train people up on, on making application and stepping up to serve, finding out what their strengths are during that training process.
Right.
So that will help us find people who fit those boards and commissions better. Any other comments or questions? We have before us a resolution by the City Council of the City of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, County of Clay, to officially declare vacancies which now exist or will exist through the month of May twenty twenty five on various boards and commissions for the City of Excelsior Springs. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifteen fifty nine.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution fifteen fifty nine, consideration of declaration of board vacancies. Second.
We all three. I'll let Shannon sort that one out.
Got it.
Okay, roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Resolution number fifteen fifty nine is approved. And last agenda item is February twenty twenty five revenue report and financials for review. And Vonda Floyd, our finance director, will present the lovely details of our finances before the council.
Right, thank you, mayor, council. Within your council packets for your review are the financials for the month of February twenty twenty five, prepared by the Finance Department. And the appropriations are in accordance with the city's purchasing policy. And appropriations are. Appropriations for February the sixth, twenty twenty five, six hundred twenty four thousand two ninety one ninety three. And appropriations for February the thirteenth, twenty twenty five, two million nine hundred forty eight thousand one ninety three and twenty eight cents. And within that week, we paid the city's bonds and certificates of participation, their semi-annual payment, and those totaled two point eight million of that expenditure. Appropriations for February the twentieth, one hundred ninety four thousand two hundred forty one dollars and ten cents. Appropriations for February twenty seventh, four hundred seventy nine thousand six hundred thirty six dollars and forty three cents. Payroll on February the fourteenth of four hundred twelve thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars and seventy one cents. And payroll on February the twenty eighth, four hundred ten thousand three hundred forty two dollars and sixty three cents. For total appropriations for February, five million sixty nine thousand one hundred forty three dollars and eight cents. And the total revenues for the month of February, two million three hundred fifty seven thousand eleven dollars and ninety five cents.
Any questions or comments for Vonda on the financials? Hearing none.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That agenda item needs no council action, so we will move into remarks. We'll begin with our city manager.
All right. So if you look at your transmittals, you'll see that the court report is included for the month of February. The, you have an invitation to attend the Community Relations Council for Job Corps on Wednesday, March twenty six in the morning. And let's see, there are some, some notes about the Gateway Trail Solar Project that was provided by Rick Yoder. And then there were some letters to Mark Myrath in support of. One is the Career and Technical Education Programs in Missouri. The second one is as well. And then this is kind of really pretty neat. Deb Foster has worked to bring a traveling exhibit to Excelsior. Depp Foster has worked to bring a traveling exhibit to Excelsior Springs. She's very excited about this. This is the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall, and it will be installed in Pyburn, Wallfield, and it will be there from September four, I'm sorry, September ninth through the fourteenth, and it will, let's see, but that's not all. The museum is going to do some local, special local displays from February first, 2026, through November thirtieth of '27 at the museum. So, the Vietnam wall will name fifty-eight thousand, over fifty-eight thousand servicemen and eight servicewomen who died during the Vietnam War, and that includes over fourteen hundred soldiers lost from nearly four hundred cities and towns across Missouri, including nineteen from Clay County and five from Ray County. So, they're very excited about bringing that to our community.
September twenty-sixth.
Okay.
She left that year off, so.
Okay. It's next year.
We'd just be early.
Yeah. And the last item, let's see, city officials' training seminars, there's a brochure for that, if anyone is interested in some of those seminar topics. That's it for me.
Okay. Yeah, if you've never been to the Vietnam Traveling Wall, it's quite an experience. I, as chaplain for local, two forty-nine, I was asked to give a prayer in front of the wall down at the downtown Kansas City when it was here a few years ago, and to watch some of these guys come up and find their buddy's name, and put their hand on the name, and just weep like children was pretty moving. So, that'll be a neat thing to have in our city. So, we move on to remarks from city council, and I'm going to start right here with Mayor Pro Tim Spear. Surprise, surprise.
Now, the only thing that I had, I had the privilege to stop by the local fire department, and Nathan Box gave me a tour of the fire training facility, and got to meet Mr. Potter, and man, what a phenomenal asset for this community. If you haven't had an opportunity to take a look, I didn't encourage you to do so. It's going to be, it's still a work in progress, but certainly something that's going to be beneficial for our local as well as surrounding fire departments.
That'll be a great day when we can christen that, and he said he may even put councilmen in gear and put us inside, smoke us up. John, are you ready?
I'm right after you.
I'll do it.
I'm right behind you.
I will do it.
I'm going to go.
Mayor, is that what you call a smoked hand?
(laughing)
Gary, I'm telling you. I have new target.
Oh, my. That's not recorded, is it?
Every bit of it, yeah.
Okay. We'll move on then to Councilman Rennie.
Yes, so next week-
Can you clarify your comment?
Yes, no, I'm not going to clarify the comment. So, next week, we're honored to have David Burton come in, neighboring, neighborhood specialist from the MU extension. He'll be on the twenty-fifth at seven PM at the library. He'll be our special guest for the Neighborhood Engagement Team, as well as he will be speaking with the Excelsior Springs Ministerial Association.
Yeah.
So, we're excited because we're ready to lower my eyes, and her efforts, we're excited about launching the mayor's block party challenge, starting in April and running through October. So, we're excited about that.
It'll be a lot of fun, and I believe Mayor Pro Tim Spear is already organizing-
Already in works, yes.
His block party.
Just waiting for the snow to get out of town.
Councilman McGovern, what say you?
Well, I appreciate Representative Myrath and his wife Becky attending tonight's meeting and making the presentation to Nate, it was pretty special, and I know you probably should be in Jeff City now, but you're off.
Spring break.
Oh, lucky. And one additional reminder, I do have tickets for the mayor's prayer breakfast, May first. I'm selling them for eleven dollars, because you get a really good seat. If you buy them for eleven dollars and you only pay ten, you're not going to get as good a seat, so.
And you dip last, too.
That's right. So, feel free to see me before I have to see you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Councilman St. John?
Oh, man, I got a list here. One is Nate, congratulations. When, I was on the board when we hired Nate, and one of the comments who said, "You know, this guy's got a lot of potential. We just didn't realize you had that much potential." We're definitely impressed, so. And Myrath, welcome.
Thank you.
And, man, Depp is really rocking and rolling, and I have the opportunity to hear from the board's standpoint of what all it's looking at and working with and so forth, and I think it, I don't know if we realize the impact that group is making and that organization. When you see those numbers, and thank you for leading that, do appreciate that very much, because it does really make a difference in our downtown and for our city overall, because, you know, people coming in downtown, a lot of times are traveling through other parts to get here, and that's also, you know, there's economic benefits to that as well. So, thank you.
I have quite a memory of downtown prior to Depp, and you've done such an amazing job, it's just unbelievable.
Yeah.
Never would have thought it was possible.
We're not done.
Remember the late seventies and-
We're just getting started.
Now you've got your work cut out for you.
Gosh, I'm making second guesses.
Well.
I will echo that comment from Councilman McGovern. If you want to have your eyes open to what downtown used to look like, get on Missouri DNR's website and look at the downtown real estate inventory pictures from nineteen ninety-one. Almost every business on Broadway and about half of Thompson were boarded up with plywood. And so, when I have guests come into the bed and breakfast, I go, "What a cool little town you have." I said, "We have come a long way, baby, and we are not done yet. We're just getting started."
That's because you have to do-
That's right.
I'll add that there's lots of mileage from all the work that's done, because it translates into people who are interested in moving here and coming back over and over again, and the other mileage is the work that you're doing with neighborhoods. The CEC is huge. Even someone in Chicago mentioned to me about all the good things that we're doing, and so it has lots of legs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to add a comment, too. Today I drove the trolley in the Kansas City St. Patrick's Day parade.
Ooh.
And afterwards, a gentleman came up because he saw Excelsior Springs on the trolley, and he was remembering Excelsior Springs. He's a former resident, Mr. Elmore, he's in his eighties, and he was remembering Excelsior Springs from the nineteen eighties, and I said, "Oh, my, things have changed so much," and I gave him one of these.
Oh, great.
Awesome.
So, he took that with him, so he's seeing a new picture of Excelsior Springs.
Excellent.
That's pretty cool.
Well, thanks for being an ambassador today. All right. I will echo John's comment about the mayor's prayer breakfast. It's Thursday, May first, at seven AM at the Elms, and Mike has shared, Pastor Mike Rudrow has shared with me the name and the bio of the speaker, and it's going to be a very uplifting experience, and Representative Myrath, I hope you can make it. I'm not sure-
It's a Thursday?
May first, are you still in session?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't be crazy, there's some really tough-
Well, you'll be with us in spirit, right?
Maybe they want my vote, maybe they don't, I don't know.
All right. I have no further comments, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I think we're ahead of closed session.
Oh, there you go.
Are we?
Are we?
That's true.
I see that now, okay.
I'm looking for the language.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the meeting pursuant to revise the FJU's Missouri Section sixty-ten point oh-two-one, paragraph one.
Second. Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Hating his coach.
I think this is what we're talking about now.